Please rise, your worship of the mayor. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Please note that the council meeting will be livestreamed to the web. I don't have any apologies, I don't have any announcements, but I do have the pleasure of two APW awards. So I'm going to make an introductory, some introductory comments, and then we're going to join together in a water. And then I'm going to make the first citation, have the recipient come up and make a couple of, a few comments. And then the second citation and that recipient come up and make a few comments. Enga iwi, enga reo, enga mana, enga taifa. Enga manu hiri tua rangi o te muto, o te ao faanui. E roo rangi tiarama, no mai fakatou mai ra. Ki na tohu, fakatairanga, poneki, tihae maori ora. Hopi means to put your hands on your hips, ki hau means to put them down. Okay, hopi. Now we're just practising here. Tu tiamae na iwi, toru faa. To the right, look up it. Tu tiamae na iwi, mehaua. Okay, back there. Tu tiha hobet, tu tiamae na iwi, toru faa.
Tu tiamae na iwi, auua. Ta so, ta soua.
To the left.
Tu tiamae na iwi, auua. Ta so, ta soua. Pa e ari la ra mantaula. Me te aroha, e na iwi. Ki aapatahi, ki aapatahira. Ta so, ta soua. Auua ta so, ta soua. Ee.
No way, you did well so we don't, we don't really... So the first citation is an Absolutely Positively Wellingtonian award for Stan J. Andis. It's my pleasure to present this award to Stan for 30 years of community service to Wellington, particularly the eastern suburbs in a variety of roles. Stan grew up in the eastern suburbs and attended Miramar South School, then Rongatay College. He was a keen sportsman playing football for the Miramar Rangers. And after marrying his wife Patricia, unwelcome Patricia, they settled in Aheriri Street in Strathmore Park where they have now lived for half a century. In the mid 1980s Stan was involved in a community group to protest against the excessive airport noise endured by residents. And this eventually resulted in the present curfew on flights between midnight and 6am. Around the same time he was also involved with the Moa Point Community Liaison Group, working to control the odours coming from the plant. In the 1990s Stan became president of the Strathmore Park Progressive Association, a position he still holds today. He's also been involved in junior coaching at the Miramar Golf Club for the last four years. And for many years Stan has spoken up for the residents of Wellington's eastern suburbs. Your advocacy on behalf of others is admirable. We might not always agree with your conclusions, but we are delighted that you take the opportunity to present the views, to listen to people in your suburbs, to alert both the eastern ward councillors, the staff and the rest of us to the views and issues, and you do that very fairly. So on behalf of the Wellington City Council, I'd like to thank Stan and declare him an Absolutely Positively Wellingtonian. Tenokoto, tenokoto.
Your worship, councillors. Thank you most sincerely, it makes me feel most humble, and in fact I've got jelly in the knees. In accepting this award, I wish to recognise some extraordinary people with whom I have worked and acknowledge their support and efforts during times of both thick and thin. I dedicate this award to the following. Our mentor, the late Maxine Harris. Kay Miller. John Beg. Rosa Carrick. Rose Bedford. The late Fred Clements. Sherry and Laurie Cornish. Ken Phillips. Annette Halliwell. Glenn Kingston. And Paul Franken. Without the support of my cherished wife and family, I would not be here today. And, and by the way, you may be wondering why I'm wearing this golden tie. It's APW all right, but it's also, in February this year we celebrated our golden wedding.
So I'd now like to speak to the Absolutely Positively Wellington Award for the Mormon Helping Hands Wellington Stake. It's my pleasure to present an Absolutely Positively Wellingtonian award to this group. The Mormon Helping Hands Wellington Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And it's, this award is for your goodwill volunteer projects in the Wellington community. Since 2008, the Mormon Helping Hands group have coordinated huge yearly working bees, attended by over 1500 people, contributing over five and a half thousand volunteer hours. And they've worked so well with other groups, you've made a real difference. Volunteer projects have included restorations, clean-ups and general maintenance of outdoor space as well as historic building and education facility renovation. I remember working with some of you in the Tawa Tawa Reserve and the Ophirro Stream and then the Karori Cemetery Clean-up, and there have been many others, and I know you work across all parts of Wellington. You've done all sorts of things, weeding and collecting rubbish, and it's lovely to see you've got a range of members who come from all walks of life. And it's great for them to be working together, and I really thank my elected colleagues when they join in with some of these events and just see how committed your group is. So you also give to various food banks, help women's refuge, the night shelter, assist with book collections for Fijian villages. And so we're very pleased to recognise the Wellington Mormon Helping Hands group today with your regular contribution to our work programme and a great effort towards our aim of 2 million trees by 2020. So you've got to keep going, you know, you get an award, don't stop please. And so on behalf of the Wellington City Council, thank you. thank you, and you are all Absolutely Positively Wellingtonians.
Well, just a few words. Let me say how surprised we were to be considered for this award, to be nominated for the award. As a church, we feel that serving in our community is such an important part of what we do and who we are. And it's been a real pleasure for us to be able to work so closely with the Wellington City Council over so many years. When you have up to 200 people all looking to come out on the same day to do a service project, it can be a little difficult to find something to do. And the council has been such a help to identify pieces of work we could do that would be of lasting value to the community. So we really appreciate that. Your worship, we appreciate the many times that you've joined us. Put on your gum boots. And also many councillors that are here today have joined us on those working bees. So we appreciate that, too. I want to recognise Eileen Muller, who led our efforts in the Mormon Helping Hands projects for many years. She worked tirelessly, and so I appreciate that. And of course, all the members of the church. It's not an easy thing to get 200 people to come out on a Saturday morning, but they do it every year. And your worship, I can guarantee, we'll be coming back again and again.
Thank you. And while the members of Andis Family and Friends and the Mormon Helping Hands, you're very welcome to stay for the next few hours of democracy. You may choose to move at this moment to return. I'll just continue on, so... So, moving on to the next item, I'm calling members present to declare any conflicts of interest you may have. Do I have any conflicts in relation to any items? And we do have an item not on the agenda, so understanding order... Sorry, you want the minutes first, I beg your pardon. I move that the council approve the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of June 2015, a rather important meeting where we did the long-term plan. So do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Please vote. Declare those carried and confirmed. So moving on to items not on the agenda. An item not on the agenda may be dealt with at the meeting if we decide so by resolution and the presiding member explains why when it's open to the public, and it will be in public as well, and why it can't be delayed. So the late item is the amended submission on the Wellington Town Belt Bill. It can't be delayed until the next council meeting on the 26th because if we want the bill to be introduced to Parliament on the 16th of September 2015, we have to make a decision today. So I'm going to move, and it has been generally circulated, it hasn't appeared right in front of you today. We have circulated and shared the papers. So I move that council receive the late item and note that the item cannot be deferred because a decision is required before the 25th of August to enable the bill to be introduced into Parliament on the 16th of September 2015. That's a procedural motion, isn't it? So no debate. Yeah. I need a seconder. Thank you, councillor Marsh. We will vote on whether to accept the late item. This is not whether you like the content or not, but whether we will debate it today or not. Thank you. I declare that motion passed. So we will be looking at towards the end of the meeting, 3.3. So I now move to public participation. Do we have Tony Randall from the Johnsonville Community Association, who assures me he has new things to say? So please come up, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillors. And also thank you to the mayor for accepting my request to speak essentially on the same topic at a subsequent meeting. But I do hopefully bring some more information to your attention, which may be of interest in terms of your decision. The topic I want to talk about is the bus rapid transit recommendation for accepting the indicative business case. What I have done since the last meeting is done a close comparison between the information in the indicative business case and the previous spine study, which has got extensive information about it. What I've found is that the indicative business case essentially doesn't answer the key questions it was supposed to answer, but it really relitigates what the public transport study selection of preferred option is. But first of all, I also think that's got some, you know, a number of serious issues. I point out even some basic arithmetic issues, unfortunately. Some of the information, notably the table about the capital costs of the revised spine study options, because they changed a few things. You know, the bus priority option had different buses from the bus rapid transit option. So they got rid of the difference by taking out that. But the figures in this table that are used throughout the report don't add up. I mean, they literally don't add up, I'm sorry. If you add up the numbers under bus priority, it doesn't add to $58.6 million. It adds to $49.4 million if you calculate it correctly. And so also the amounts in terms of design and construction, they're incorrect as well. You know, they're not 20% of the amounts above. I mean, it doesn't add up, it's very disappointing. But there's more fundamental things. They say that option one is really the same as bus priority, but I'd really question that. There's two options that have partial busways, bus lanes, and that's option one and option three, the recommended option. But when you look at the capital costs, the revised capital costs, of course, the bus priority has got a capital cost of $49.4, as I mentioned, not $58. But option one only has a capital cost of about $31 million. It's actually a lot less investment than even the most basic thing that the spine study put forward. Option three has a capital cost of $58.8 million, which is much closer to bus priority. And when I look through the details of the bus priority, I actually think it's much, much closer to option three. You're actually recommending bus priority as one of your options, which I think is very disappointing. It also, in its study, in its evaluation of option three, which is, as I say, was very close to bus priority, at least it's an investment, it rates the option three the same as option five. I mean, in terms of reduction in public transport times, it rates option three as a three and option five as a three. The spine study said about bus priority, bus priority option provides no greater benefit than the reference case, which is doing nothing. And yet it says bus rapid transit provides the greatest decrease in travel time. They have quite different conclusions on essentially the same options. The same with increasing, very important question of increasing the capacity on the spine study, on the spine corridor. This business case says option three is as good as bus rapid transit, $170 million investment, at increasing capacity on the spine study. Yet the original options report said that bus priority makes no difference than what we've got now. So very different conclusions, very disappointing that, you know, the same study has found different conclusions on essentially the same option. I'd also question whether or not we're comparing apples for apples, real apples for apples. It's been noted that all the options are going to carry heavy buses, okay? But when you go through the details of the costings, the bus rapid transit option has strengthening along the Golden Mile, pavement strengthening, because it's the option that has the heavy buses. The bus priority doesn't have strengthening. There is a major difference in costs. Millions of dollars the difference of the cost in bus rapid transit is pavement strengthening you need for both options. And the same issue with cycleways. It was commented that cycleways weren't taken care of, but if you look at the cross-sections between bus priority and bus rapid transit, they're very different. Bus priority has cyclists on the busway. Bus rapid transit has protected cycleways as part of its investment. So it could well be you're not comparing apples with apples. That bus priority is going to cost more. Option three or four may cost more. Or if you want to say, you know, bus priority actually is over-invested because it's got protected cycleways. Yet you've rejected it. And that's where I have this comment, that it actually doesn't align. Options, neither option three or four do not align, or at least it's not clear that they align to the Cycling Framework, which wants protected cycleways along these same corridors. This business case doesn't also answer the key questions about vehicle type, about whether or not buses can pass each other and not get stuck in a queue, about whether or not the capacity provided will meet your targets and the regional council's targets for improved public transport. So what's the way forward? Let's be very clear. Option three is not the transformative change that you're after. And this is not my opinion. This is the opinion of the indicative business case. Let me quote, if I can. "Option three enables considerable improvements in moving people around the network. However, the discontinuous nature of the bus lanes means it is unlikely to have the type of transformational effect that option five, bus rapid transit, and to a less extent, option four, would have. Options four and five provide the material step change in Wellington's public transport infrastructure." So why you're even considering option three, I don't know. Option four is not even bus rapid transit. If you look at the BRT standard, it doesn't meet the minimum criteria for bus rapid transit. The minimum. Only option five is bus rapid transit. There are serious holes. There are holes big enough in this business case to drive a bus through. Okay? It has not done its job. And I really seriously hope you will reject option three and accept option four, or at the very least, stop calling it a bus rapid transit business case. Thank you.
Thank you. And will you table those papers so that we can... Thank you, that would be very useful. So if somebody from Democratic Services can make sure we've got a copy of those. Thank you very much, Tony. We now have, I don't think we have another public partis. I don't know what. No, he's not, no, he's not. So I'd like to now move to the first paper, which councillor Leicester will introduce, the appointment of electoral officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendations, but I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Charlie Ings for his service to council. All councillors would have had an extensive involvement with Charlie through the electoral process. And Charlie did fantastic jobs. I wish him the best with his future endeavours. And I'm happy to move the recommendations that Warwick Lamp, who's also been involved with the council prior as our contractor, be recommended as the new electoral officer.
And do I have a seconder? Thank you, councillor Young. Do you wish to speak? Does anyone wish to speak? I'd like to echo our thanks to Charlie and support this recommendation. Thank you, I declare that carried. And I'd now like to move to the item from councillor Eagle, District Licensing Committee, annual report, please.
Thank you, your worship. Can I refer councillors to page 11 and move the recommendations in the report? I want to make a few notes. This is the full report, the first full annual report of the Wellington District Licensing Committee, covering the period from the 1st of July last year to 30th of June this year. The DLC only came into being on the 18th of December in 2013, so it's relatively new. I want to thank the DLC chairs, the deputy chairs, councillor Foster and councillor Pannett. We've got several committee members and the secretary and support staff. And we've got Claire and Julie, there we are. So thank you for your work. I have to say that I think the DLC hit its straps this year. They certainly conducted a significantly higher number of meetings and public hearings compared to last year. They had fewer applications this year, but they certainly cleared a big backlog of work and increased those processing times significantly. There's also a positive in there around saying that in terms of process innovations, they're in development around council's website and getting a better form for people to fill out, getting them overhauled and making them more customer-friendly. You'll note, too, that there's been some media interest around a couple of decisions they made. One was the New Town, New World, where instead of walking into a sort of tunnel of liquor, they said, "Look, time's up, you've got to do something about it." So they've certainly been firm on implementing the act and coming up with some interesting ideas with craft beer and talking to operators around saying, "Hey, let's have a craft beer bottle store." So to finish, it's interesting to note that there were no appeals to the Wellington DLC around the work they did. So well done to the committee and the secretariat. Thank you.
Much councillor, do I have a seconder? Your councillor Foster, do you wish to speak? Does anyone else wish... councillor Marsh?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is... It's an important group of people. And one of the members was a member of the youth council. And while she was still on the youth council, said, "Look, I'd like to have a go at this." She's now one of the members and performing well, I understand. And it just demonstrates that you don't have to be older, grey-haired, blah, blah, blah. Anybody can be a member of the DLC.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor... Would you like to write a reply, councillor Eagle? Thank you. So we'll please vote on the annual report and maybe thank the officers, too. Declare that carried. And now we will move to the late item, the amended submission on the Wellington Town Belt Bill. And I will introduce that. And I think it's important to think about the Town Belt Bill and the generally good things that the Wellington Town Belt Bill does. There are significant advances in protecting and enhancing the town belt, adding more land back to the town belt. And there are a number of clauses about recreation that through some quite extensive consultation have been clarified. For example, also the amount of land that can be leased for certain activities and the situation with different buildings on the town belt. Now, unlike Hagley Park, our Town Belt Bill never proposed that the Public Works Act would not apply. But we did seek to modify that a little further. And my information from correspondence and conversations with the Minister of Land Information was that she wanted a clearer approach to the Public Works Act. I've had a number of conversations with different people. And my conclusion, including the MP for Wellington Central, my conclusion is that we are best to be sure that this bill, with the huge amount of work by councillor Ritchie, by the Friends of the Town Belt, by our staff and many others, actually is certain to get to the select committee. There are a couple of cases where, for example, if you look at the changes that you've got here, for example, it says... We're very clear, council has no ability to agree to the acquisition of any part of the town belt. And we also say, it now says, nothing in the... It now says, "Nothing in the Act or the town belt deed obliges us to object." But actually, nothing stops us objecting either. My view is that the increased amount of land to the town belt, reversing the tide of town belt land being taken, is well worth proceeding. So I move... Do I have a seconda? Councillor Leicester. Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. I have councillor Ritchie on the speaking list.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors. I just want to say to council, first of all, that the town belt is not for sale. What is being proposed and the changes that we have here gives a message that we agree that the town belt might be for sale, or parts of it. And I'm going to elaborate on that. I am very disappointed, having spent five years of my time with some others, ensuring significant advances for the town belt, ensuring greater protection. I won't be able to go through all of this because I've only got three minutes to speak. I'm very disappointed that the bill was not introduced... The bill which had unanimous support by this council, unanimous support, which it will not get today, was not introduced as we asked on July 22nd of this year. Madam Mayor, councillors, I just want to remind you that you are trustees of the town belt. You are morally and legally obliged to protect the town belt. The purpose of this bill, the main purpose, primary purpose of this bill is to strengthen the protection of the town belt. But what you have before you today is contrary to that and undermines your role to protect the town belt. There are significant inconsistencies now within the bill, the changed amended bill, which was completely not necessary to be changed. So that the council is now saying that it will allow compulsory acquisition. And it will allow that without waiting for compensation to be resolved. In other words, I don't... I can't imagine any one councillor going around this table, going into such a negotiation, allowing somebody to take their house without settling on the price. I cannot, cannot understand that. But then in clause 13 of the bill, it says council will not allow the sale or exchange of land. So now with this change, there is an inconsistency within the bill. Councillors, my other concern is that this makes a fuss and a folly of council's processes. It actually also parliamentary processes as well. So what is being proposed today is that we will present the unanimous bill and then we will present a submission, which presumably you are going to pass today. Maybe some of you will realise your responsibilities as trustees. So you will present a submission which is contrary to the contents of the bill. If I was sitting on that select committee, I would say to council, "What are you on about? What are you talking about? You have a bill and you have a submission which is contrary to that." What council will be doing with these changes is making it easier for the government to take the land of the town belt, making it easier by allowing... We understand the powers of the Public Works Act and we have recognised that, but we do not allow the land to be taken. It basically rips the guts, or could do, out of the town belt and could see in future... And I've always said this bill is for 100 years. It is not for tomorrow. Could see all kinds of public projects. Roading, housing, hospital, maybe even a public gondola, who knows? A road over Poole Hill Gully, people of Brooklyn would like a road. A road from Welton through Ta'akumarangi, people of Welton would like a road. That is what you are allowing and enabling and making it easier for government to do. That is not acceptable. And from my perspective, I think there should be an absolute public outrage with what is happened or happening today. We had 250 submissions to the Town Belt Management Plan. We then went to ensure that there were drafting instructions, which were supported unanimously eventually by this council. There were 50 people who supported the bill, which you supported unanimously. And now you are going to do a flip-flop. I hope you will not do that. I hope you will vote these down and revert to the unanimous bill that we have as a council and ensure that that goes to the select committee. There are the numbers to ensure that that could have gone to the select committee and could still go to the select committee after the first reading. Councillors, finally, I just remind you, you have moral obligations as trustees. You are entrusted by the people of Wellington to protect this land. This bill is supposed to protect this land. The changes undermine that protection. I will not be supporting it. And I did ask that the mayor actually withdraw this and that we revert to the original unanimous decision of council, but she has not taken that advice. Thank you. Just to finally...
Thank you, councillor.
The bill will come back ultimately for a final vote to council. And I will reserve my position at that point to decide what I see as a result from the parliamentary process, which I am quite happy to trust.
Councillor? Councillor Pannett? And then I think councillor Foster?
The history of the town belt is basically of land being taken from Tonga to Fenua and then being appropriated by the government. Basically, it has become a land bank for the government. And so basically, it is not actually private interests which threatens its integrity, but the public ones. We're basically being asked... I'm not going to talk about dead rats, because I'm a vegetarian. We're being asked to do a U-turn. And this is something we generally don't like to do. These changes are being basically placed upon us by a government that has not a lot of respect for our role as democratic decision-makers. There will be fights over this. I mean, they seem to want certainty and yet there will not be because there will be debate in the courts and in the public when this comes to select committee over how it should be implemented. I think the core point I want to make is that all we were asking for is a fair deal. It was so innocuous what we were asking for, this tiny little thing which said, "Look, we want land which is of the same or better quality." And yet the government has basically come back to stamp all over us. I have concerns about the process. There has been no public consultation, of course, on these quite fundamental changes. We hope that sympathetic MPs can make some changes. And that, of course, was councillor Ritchie and my preference, that that was done at the select committee without going back to council first. I do want to acknowledge the excellent work that many people have done on this bill for many, many years. And it's very disappointing at this late stage to see that there are so many problems. We didn't undermine the PWA. I, of course, wanted an exemption to it, and I think there should be more exemptions. But we just wanted a very, very minor change. This thing, I agree with councillor Ritchie about giving away our negotiating power, that seems risible. And we have seen the compensation provisions watered down to the extent that in the original, of course, the minister's discretion was not limited by the PWA, but now we have given that away. Why would we do that? The point that it might be the intent of current officials that this is the way the process would work might be valid, but this is a bill for 100 years and we cannot bind those officials or future politicians to that intent. I am extremely disappointed. In fact, the most disappointing thing is about that we did really try hard to protect the town belt by saying, "If you're going to take land off us, then we want land of similar or better quality," which was even... But we have got now this clause which says, "Well, it can be some other place. It could be in Johnsonville, for goodness sake." And the point is, this is not the place to be talking about deficits of open space in other parts of the city. The land was supposed to be coming back to the town belt. Point is too, from after officers' advice, what happens if we try to negotiate and the government says no and we have to take the land? That is absolutely a real risk and I'm very uncomfortable about that. I did try with good intentions to get longer for us to negotiate. The six months is hopeless. Given how slowly the wheels of government turn, we could very much easily revert to the standard process. The last point that I want to make is, of course, the other important point, which is the sidelining of the public. I mean, this is just cynical. Basically, we don't want more save the basins with the temerity to win at Boards of Inquiry. We want to stop you having a say when it comes to the removal of land. And the fact that the council's rights have explicitly been removed is also of strong concern. Yes, our rights may have been reserved under the PWA, but they should be reinforced in this particular bill. And saying that we have no obligation to object is also cynical. So this history unfortunately looks like it will continue, that the town belt will continue to be a land bank where the state, when it needs land, comes along and takes it and gives us a poor deal. This bill was a chance to basically try and right those wrongs. And I am very disappointed too because I have walked alongside councillor Ritchie and others of you over the last four years to try and get this bill right. But these changes for me are fundamental and they have compromised it to such an extent that I feel I cannot support it.
Thank you, councillor. We don't have anyone else speaking, so I'll make a brief write of reply. While people may have liked to have an exemption in the Public Works Act, that was never a likely outcome of this bill. Councillors?
Misrepresentation. No one ever asked...
Sorry, councillor. I wasn't actually... I was in write of reply, I was addressing the issues. I wasn't saying what you said. I rule against you.
One or other of us...
And there wasn't a magic ability to stop compulsory acquisition. And we are not prevented from objecting. I'm sure that those hypothetical cases that councillor Ritchie put forward, we would be very likely, quite possibly unanimously, to object to this. Councillor? I supported the previous wording of the bill, but to be honest, I would rather have a fairly good town belt act than a perfect bill sitting in somebody's cupboard. And fundamentally, I've talked to lawyers, I've talked to various MPs, and that is my view that we would be better to put it forward than not to put it forward. So I would now like you to vote on the receive the information, request select committee recommend changes, adopt the amended submission. And councillor Ritchie, before I actually moved, I just wondered, I had asked you, if you wanted to be the mayor and the natural environment portfolio leader, if there's three of us together, please note that you're there in case there's any technical submissions and/or provide additional information. So in number four there. One, two, three and four. Are we taking them together?
I need clarification to what you were just referring to.
Well, I just wanted you to... Sorry, we've had our debate. I shouldn't be...
But what was your clarification? Because I don't know what you're talking about.
Does anyone want to take them separately? I was just drawing councillors' attention to the natural environment portfolio leader being involved with any process of submissions. Do you want to take them separately?
Madam Mayor, I reserve my right to make an independent submission if I should so decide.
Okay, we'll take it all together then, because nobody's asked to have them separately. Thank you. I declare that carried. And we will now move on. And if we can inform the relevant MPs, that would be helpful. Thank you. So we now move to the report of the Transport and Urban Development Committee, verandas bylaw. Over to you, councillor Foster.
Madam Mayor, I'm pleased you to move this. And councillors, you'll recall the debates that we've had over this and basically everybody was pretty supportive of it. And just draw your attention to the... We asked, at the committee, we asked whether the bylaw could include some wording around why we actually want verandas. And those words have been included in there in red. And I think that they are very helpful because it does say to people who are reading it, "We don't have verandas just for fun. We have them for perfectly good reasons." And in fact, it's when you go out on some of the lovely days we're having recently, if you didn't have them, the city would not function half as well as it does. So it's in everybody's best interests to have a working collection of verandas to make the city more livable and more economically vibrant. So I am pleased to move this and just to say thank you to the staff who've been involved in that. And thank you also to the submitters for the points that they made. I move.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have a seconda? Councillor Pannett? Does anyone wish to speak? Then we will vote on the bylaw. Thank you. I declare that carried. Probably stopped raining now. So I'd now like to move to the next item, which is councillor Foster again from that committee, and the CapEx Fund the Bus Rapid Transit's next stage.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. In essence, this is a relatively simple decision. We had an extensive debate at the committee. But really what it is, is just saying, "Look, can we bring forward some money, which is already in the LTP, but can we bring it forward now so we can actually do some work on this?" And it allows us to do the indicative and the detailed business case. And it's pretty obvious from the debate that we had and in fact, many of the public comments, that people want more detail, they want more information, they want to know what this thing is going to look like on the ground. I want to know what it's going to look like on the ground. And the reality is, we're not going to know that until we've actually spent the money to actually do that detailed work. So that's really what this is about. So it's to answer some of those questions. Tony Randall in his comments earlier, you know, "How much is it going to cost?" Well, look, if the number's 45 or it's 51 or whatever, we don't know the answer to that either yet because we don't know exactly what it is that we're going to deliver. What this does do is it gives us some rough order of magnitude costs. So we can say, "Look, it's in that sort of 40, 50 million, or it's in that 100, 120 million, or it's in the 400, 500 million, whatever." It gives you a rough idea. It's not going to answer... We can't answer those details at the moment, but it does give us that approximation. So look, I would love to be in the position, Madam Mayor, of being able to say, "We can answer all those questions now. We know exactly what it's going to look like. We know exactly what it's going to cost. We know exactly what the implications are going to be." But we don't know that at the moment and it's going to take this piece of work to get there. It's been really quite interesting to see some of the comments that have been made on what we've got in front of us. And I guess the general theme has been that we're not doing enough, that this is not ambitious enough. And the Don Post editorial was a classic example, although I'm not quite sure what the Don Post actually wants us to do. Because the Don Post also said, "It's got to be bus-based," because it said light rail's a terrible idea. So that's a daydream, in a previous editorial. So what do they want us to do? They've said it's bus-based. And most other people, I think, some people have said they'd like light rail. And it was actually this council, in fact, I was the one that moved it when we got the report back for the PTSS, that said, "We would like to keep open the corridors for the future in case light rail becomes a proposition." You know, the city's grown, it's grown around those corridors and light rail isn't now viable. And quite possibly, that might happen in a generation's time. I'm talking about a generation of buses, you know, 20 years' time. It may well be that that is a proposition for that time, so we need to keep the corridor open. And we've said that we want to do that. So that's the answer, the people who said light rail is the answer now. And in fact, some of those people have also said, "Look, even if you start it today, it's going to take you 10 or 15 years to actually get anything built." So even if it starts today, we've still got to put something on the ground for the next 10 to 15 years at least. So you're talking about the length of life of a bus, roughly speaking. So for now, what we've got is a bus-based system. And I think one of the issues we've got here is one of terminology. And right through the PTSS process, one of the questions I had was, "Can you explain to me exactly what the difference is between bus priority and..." what the difference is between bus priority and bus rapid transit? And the reality is, it's a continuum between doing virtually nothing, and the bus runs on a road with no priority at all, and then a little bit more priority, and a little bit more priority, and then you get right through the various standards of, of bus rapid transit, which is the kind of document which, which Tony was talking about. Now, the reality is, if you look at Wellington, would you ever be able to deliver those kind of gold standards of bus rapid transit? And the answer is, well, you could, but the implications for other modes, including for pedestrians, and we're talking just about motorists here, we're talking about pedestrians and cyclists, would be very, very significant, and they'll be significantly, potentially significantly adverse. And what would the implications be for our urban form as well? Well, you're not going to be able to deliver that kind of bus rapid transit with the ability to pass on, on our golden mile. So if you're going to do that, you either demolish wholesale blocks of the city, or you transfer the system away from the golden mile and put it somewhere else, which means it's going down presumably the keys. And then you're going to say, what do we do now in the golden mile? Put all the cars through the golden mile? And there's some really significant impacts on the city that that will cause as well. So I think when you ask people what it is that they're expecting, they also go to, not only, that's the standard that we want, or what would the implications be? The other thing is, a lot of people are sort of going to some of the, the other pieces which aren't actually part of this. So what we're talking about here is the, the physical route between, well, the core of it, between railway station and the hospital and Kilburne, but also extending out through to, to Johnsonville, to Kilburne, to, or to, to the airport in Miramar, and to Island Bay and to Cororee. So that's, I think that the, the route structure is good. But a lot of the things people are asking about are things like, what kind of buses are going to run on these routes? I actually lap more than that, look at the standing order if, if the mayor says. What kind of, what kind of buses are going to be running on these routes? That's not a question we answer here, it's pertinent, but it's not a question we answer here. What kind of ticketing? What kind of fare structures? All those kind of things are the things that the regional council needs to work on, to answer and to work with us on. And we said that we would like Paul Swain to come and talk to us about that, which he will do. And we also said that we would have a report every second Transport and Urban Development Committee to make sure that we are abreast of all those issues as well, which is also going to happen. So this councillor's, is just a step along the way. It is money that we need to put into alongside NZTA, alongside GW, to get the answers that we need so that we can actually deliver a significant advance in public transport in the system. And the last thing to say is, I'm inclined to agree around option three. I think option four is much more likely to be the best bet, it gives us the best benefits. And also to note that it does talk about being twenty-four seven. A lot of people seem to have missed that point, twenty-four seven. So I move.
Thank you, I'll second, and I'd like to speak. And then I believe we have an amendment from councillor Young. Last week, well, on the fifth of August, all except one agreed that we would adopt the bus rapid transit indicative business case. The eleven people present at that meeting, and I have the list here if anyone's interested, also agreed to bring forward the 1.5 CapEx, or recommend to the council, so it'll be interesting to see whether those numbers change. But they also added some comments about livability, about moving towards a fully electric network, about moving towards priority action being to secure the core spine, but also retaining the ability to consider other public transport modes. Now, I think that the public transport spine study no doubt has some flaws, but do we want to go back four years and start all over again, where we looked at light rail, underground, all of those different options? Light rail came out as number two, bus rapid transit came out as number one. The Greater Wellington Chair at the time, who was pretty dismissive at the beginning of the study, moved to say, yes, we will get to a capacity constraint and we may well need to move to light rail. My view is that should be sooner rather than later, but let's face it, you cannot run rails, you cannot run trams, you cannot run electric double deckers reliably unless you've got a clear way, and preferably twenty-four seven. We have got a very busy city, and our peak hours at the moment, four to six, and seven till nine, five days a week, we're just as busy at the weekends. It's not good enough, I agree that we should be moving much more towards option four than option three, but option five? I mean, do you really think we can put Kooriciba kind of infrastructure down a livable, walkable kind of city? That's, or the North Shore busway? Have you seen the North Shore busway with its little concrete curbs and so on? That would not work in Lampton Quay. So it may be high quality from the point of view of buses moving fast, but it would not be high quality from the point of view of all of the people shopping and enjoying I'm very happy that we enhance public transport, I've always said this is an interim step, but let's take it. And I look forward to this council being really brave when it comes to putting priority for public transport, whatever mode, ahead of parking, which is what you're going to have to do if you really want a step change in public transport. So I support this, I think there's lots of questions, I thank Mr Randall for his points earlier on. Those are just, if we stop now and don't fund it, we're probably never going to find out the answers to those questions. So I think we should take this joint work with NZTA and Greater Wellington very seriously and get on with it.
Thank you, look, I'm going to change my vote on the money, and I'm just going to explain briefly why. So I retain my philosophical and policy perspective on BRT, I don't think it will work, but I'm happy to support the money going forward, just apart from anything to make sure that we get our bus lanes in. But look, what I feel very hopeful about since we had our debate is that the mood is changing. So even though I was frustrated with the chief executive yesterday, and about, we'll be in the retirement home by the time it comes, the, the regional council seems to be shifting as well. People are understanding that BRT is not going to work. And councillor Young and I do actually agree on this point. We do not have the right city for this, this particular form of transport, and I think it is dawning on people. So I think that's extremely positive, and I support the mayor's comments on the need to be more ambitious. But what I would say is that I want to see some explicit commitment in all our policy documents saying that we need light rail. Councillor Foster, it is good that we're saying it's not precluded, but really, that's not enough. That's the sort of, in the never never. We should be putting the, the planning instruments in place now, put it in the next ten years. And it, and it does take long for that kind of infrastructure, but at least let's get going. As I said to you yesterday, we've been talking about light rail since nineteen ninety-five. I mean, that's twenty years ago. We don't need to spend another twenty years talking about it. I do agree with Mr Randall, option three is ridiculous, and I don't think we should be spending much time on it, if we get a bit of technical information, but I will be very unhappy if we compromise and water down the public transport system so that we've only got some bus priority at intersections. So thank you to the mayor for her persuasive arguments to me. I do want to see these bus lanes in as quickly as possible, so look forward to seeing that happening as well as some more leadership on this point to get the right wording in and to get the funding sorted as well.
Thank you councillor Panett. Councillor Young.
Thank you madam Mayor. So I'm sure you all realise by now that I really love public transport, I have lived in cities where we pretty much relied on public transport and bicycles. And I'm very concerned about the state of our bus service, which I believe is in crisis. The trolley buses go in twenty-three months' time, and there is no viable replacement. Bus fares are so high that passenger numbers are flatlining, and now we're trying to con the ratepayers with this very bogus version of bus rapid transit. I don't believe we can design busways when we don't know what kind of buses we're going to have. They talked about double-decker buses, and then the spokesman from the regional council said they could kneel when they went through the tunnels, although it hasn't been designed yet. This seems to me to be absolutely crazy. Infrastructure investment needs to be done in conjunction with bus selection and integrated ticketing. The key is how the parts work together, and so that it's effectively a team that delivers a solution. When the elements are done together, it's a bit like deciding on the railway lines without knowing what trains you're going to put on them. For example, if we need extra strong roads on the BRT core routes to support the weight of large capacity electric buses, then this needs to be included in the detailed business case, otherwise we could find that we buy buses that are too heavy for our roads. So the report also predicts eight percent growth across twenty years, that's less than our average population growth. I'm very concerned about the lack of ambition in this report. So one of the things that, so I'm just going to try to find my handwritten notes, BRT is like light rail, so you have bus lanes instead of dedicated railway lines. And it provides reliability because it doesn't share its corridors. This, this recommendation is a watered down, dumbed-down version of a scheme that's already been criticised very publicly for being too weak. It's so weak, it should probably be in a hospice. So I will be moving an amendment, because I don't believe that we can tell people that we have got bus rapid transit when it doesn't meet the criteria. Do you want me to do the amendment now, madam Mayor?
You don't have any other time to do it.
Well, you've had decades on the council, so you obviously know the standing orders better than I do. So what I would like to do is replace the words bus rapid transit with marginally improved bus. And I believe councillor Eagle is prepared to second me on this. Because, because that's all it is, we're spending millions, we're spending millions for a minor tweak. We're obsessed with cycling, and rightly so, but the reality is, most people will still continue to take the bus. And we can't all shop on the internet. This plan is a useful upgrade, but it doesn't go far enough. So do I get, just on the standing orders, do I let councillor Eagle speak to second it?
I think it will be up to councillor Eagle to decide that or not. You just carry on. Councillor, councillor Young, I'm going to be generous and let you have another couple of minutes to finish your points about the amendment.
Thank you. So about the amendment, so I'm producing this amendment so that we are honest with our ratepayers. They are not going to get bus rapid transit. The plans that are proposed do not meet the requirements of the standards of bus rapid transit. So I just think that I want to be honest with the ratepayers and tell them what we are proposing to give them, marginally improved buses.
Well, that's a marginally improved resolution from what you proposed.
I will be, you know, with a sad heart, I will support the main, the substantive.
Thank you councillor, and it's nice that you've moved an amendment so we know how the standing orders work. Now, would councillor Eagle, would you wish to speak to this, or you could just second it pro forma? And if you want to speak, you have to stand up.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, your worship. How could I not second this? Because when, when I was confronted with this, and I saw marginally improved bus, and I saw MIB, I thought men in black. So I got it wrong, and it meant marginally improved bus instead. So, look, I guess, I guess what councillor Young's trying to alert us all to is that it's a reality check on what's being proposed here. You know, we've heard lots about Copenhagen, England, Seattle, Portland, everywhere around the world when it comes to transport options, and, you know, they've often said, hey, look over here, this is what they've got, and this is what we'll do here in Wellington. What we're saying here really is that bus rapid transport looks like this, but what's going to happen in Wellington will be quite something else, and we're really just marginally improving it. So, look, I don't want to take away from what councillor Foster was saying about, in the amendment, sorry, in the substantive that says, look, we really want more money to get more information, to do more work, and on that, that principle, it sounds good. But, but, but I guess we, we do, I am aware that we do need to be aware when we start making grand statements around twenty-four seven clear ways, and we'll do this and we'll do that. Because councillor Frey and I were recently at a meeting where car parking was a big issue that impacted on children, families around Kilburne Park, where they said, hey, look, you know, our kids catch the buses, we like cycling, we like walking, but the almighty car still has a place in our life. And when we play sport and we recreate, then we need to take this into account, and, and I guess that's what it reminds me of. If I was starting to juggle priorities on things too, I would also caution us and I, hopefully the information will, that we get from the spend will say, actually affordability is an issue that we could do with some more understanding about. Because if councillor Lee and I are up in Courtney Place eating yum cha, and we're trying to get from Courtney Place to the railway station, that's two dollars or one fifty on a snapper, so we're just wary that, you know, that's a short distance for a lot of money. So that's just a couple of examples around, around my concerns for this. But look, in reality, it's a reflection on, is it bus record transport, or are we just marginally improving buses? And so, in that light, thank you councillor Young.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Leicester, then councillor Frey.
Thank you madam Mayor, I won't be supporting the amendment. I did have a conversation earlier today with the mover of the amendment, and I, I had described bus rapid transit, potentially slightly faster buses, which, and this is a slightly different take on, on those words, so I'm not sure if mimicry is the most sincere form of flattery. But regardless, while I may, may have some reservations on the proposal, it's not perfect, but it's the best option we've got. So my question is to the mover, what are you proposing that is better? Because you haven't answered that, you haven't stated that in the amendment either. And we've been through extensive analysis over the, over the proposals that we could work with. We started with a blank canvas from status quo all the way through to light rail, and every possible scenario in between, and there has not yet been a better proposal than the one that is before us. And the reasons for that, and a lot of them come down to the nature of Wellington's streetscape. We would love to have dedicated bus lanes and corridors for Wellington, but I put the test to anybody around this table, where would they go? Where would you put them? Thanks, so I know you can't contribute currently, we know where you'd put them, underground, but I don't think it's a realistic financial option currently either. So to the mover of the amendment, what is your alternative?
Thank you councillor Leicester, councillor Frey. Councillor Panett to the amendment?
Mayor, I do admire councillor Young's facility with words, and I think it's an excellent media statement. But look, actually, quite seriously, can I ask a question of the chief executive, whether this is actually possible to bring something up like this? I don't, this is the highest body in which we make decisions as a council, and I actually think it's not really the place for slightly flippant amendments. And, and I completely agree with councillor Young, as, as you've heard now a number of times, but I do think, I think we do need some advice about whether it's actually appropriate.
I think councillor Panett, thank you for asking, but that's actually up to me, as long as it complies with standing orders to decide. I think it's a silly amendment, and I'll be voting against it, but it's a perfectly legally allowable amendment, even if I can't see quite what it does. So let us move to the next person on the list. I don't think there is anyone else on this speaking, on the amendment? Do we need, we, nobody needs to speak on the amendment. So let's go to councillor Young's write of reply. No, she can't vote yet, not till she's had a write of reply. I think councillor Young knows the standing orders well enough for that.
So the point is, what am I, what is my alternative? What am I proposing? The point is, this is about being honest with the ratepayers, telling them what they are spending their money for, it is not bus rapid transit. So it is about being honesty, not giving people false expectations, but it's also underlying saying, I'm really disappointed this is not more ambitious. And of course, I wasn't here on the council when the spine study was done, all that kind of thing. Councillor Panett may think it's flippant, but I don't think there's anything flippant about honesty. I think it's actually integral, integral, sorry, to our role on the council. I, I do think the whole thing is a small step, it's a distressingly small step, I will support the substantive, but I just wanted to draw people's attention that you are dreaming, if you think you're getting bus rapid transit, and I want the ratepayers to know, so that we do not lead them down the garden path, or someone said to me, it's more like Alice in Wonderland.
Thank you. We will now vote on the mild amendment. May now move back to the substantive. I've got councillor Free.
Well, although I voted against your amendment councillor Young, I actually had a lot of sympathy with it, because, in fact, I agree with the sentiments of many around this table that this is, this isn't really going to be bus rapid transit. It hasn't got a show. And that's why I'm happy to vote for bringing the money forward. Let's find out sooner rather than later. Let's stop wasting time. Let's actually discover that we are going down a rabbit hole in Alice in Wonderland scenario, and there's no rabbit. There's no magic solution here, folks. It is distressing. It is distressing. What, sorry?
I thought you were referring to cyclists.
This bus rabbit transit is just going to take us down a hole. But there has to be a better solution, but I don't honestly think that this is it. And I think the sooner we find it out and work out what really is the best solution for Wellington, the sooner we do that, the better. So I will be voting for this money to come forward. There's lots wrong with our bus system, and this isn't the time to debate it, but I'm considering moving to a part of Wellington that doesn't have a weekend bus. That will mean me buying another car. It's not very good. You know, there's a lot wrong with our bus system. Sorry, it's either that or get around on my electric bike. Maybe I will be brave and green and stick with the bike. But there's a lot wrong with our bus system. We do need weekend services. We do need better services. We do need more affordable services, and perhaps reliability, which was what this is all about, in my mind, might or not actually be the number one thing we need to solve. But let's get on with it. Let's find out what we can and can't do with a detailed business case, and I'm happy to vote for the substantive.
Thank you. I can just see the headline. Bus rabbit. Councillor, I think we'll go to councillor Foster's right of reply.
I'm reminded of the rabbit club going way, way, way back. I think Andy Helen would remember that.
She's your friend.
Man haters are fewer, there's a few around here. Look, Madam Mayor, just a few quick points then to respond to. Look, it seems to me that people are wanting some answers. I thought that the, councillor Free, I think we're getting hung up by this word, and I mean, as I said right when I introduced this, that, you know, what is this going to be, and what's the difference in BRT and bus priority? And this is going to be somewhere along the continuum, and it's probably not going to meet the standards that people might say. Well, it's certainly not gold standard, it's not bronze standard, whatever, but it is, what we are looking at is an improvement. And the question, I thought the councillor Leicester asked councillor Young, was exactly the right one, is that if you don't want this, what else is it that you do want? So, you know, when Tony Randall came along to the Transport and Urban Development Committee and said, look, you know, what would your ideal be? He said, well, look, you know, well, we could go underground from Courtney Place through to Lampton Key. Well, you know, the implications of doing something like that, not only is it cost be enormous, but the implications of putting a 100-metre-long slash down the middle of Courtney Place, another one through down Lampton Key, probably not terribly attractive for our urban form as well. So I think that is the challenge we've got. What we've got to do is we've got to try and get the best we possibly can in Wellington. And what works in Wellington is not going to be, as you said, Madam Mayor, it's not going to be the same as the green fields of North Shore, where the bus priority, or the BRT, doesn't go through the middle of the North Shore city. If it did, it wouldn't look like it does. And so we've got to bear that in mind. So I think the being honest is, if I don't like it, what is my alternative? That's the honest bit, not changing the name of it. The honest bit is saying, I don't like it, what is my alternative? And then saying what that is, rather than something which was a little bit flippant, but never mind. Councillor Free, you said you're considering moving to part of Wellington that doesn't have a weekend service. Well, guess what? Maybe you missed this bit, but there's a whole package of things that the regional councillors told us about several times, that they are aiming to put in in mid-2017, and they have never said it would be any time different. And that includes things like off-peak fares. Now, they may move earlier on that, certainly had that conversation with them recently. Be nice if they could move earlier on that. It includes weekend and late-night services for many places that don't have them at the moment. It includes new route structures. So this is a significant collection of things. It is not a minor collection of things, it is a significant collection of things, which, when you put them all together. The infrastructure that we're talking about in this paper is just one part of that. It's a necessary part, but it is only one part. And I think that is what, when Paul Swain comes to talk to you about this, hopefully you get the picture. I thought we already had it, but hopefully we'll all get the picture of there is a whole lot of things going on. Some of it is in our bailiwick, some of it is in GW's bailiwick, and it is a significant change. Maybe it's not as revolutionary as some might like, but it is still a significant change. And their expectation, and I think they're going to be conservative there, is a lift of 10% to 15% in patronage. Not the 8% that I think councillor Young mentioned, and I agree with you, those figures are derisory. I mean, it's ridiculous to think, as the PTSS did, and it was the same whether it's light rail or BRT, that you would invest hundreds of millions of dollars, halve the time to get from Kilburne to the CBD, or take a third off the time to get from Newtown to the CBD, and it wouldn't make a jot of difference in terms of, in fact, you'd lose market share. I mean, that is a nonsense, never going to be the case. And we said that right up front. We said that these numbers don't make any sense whatsoever. So I fully expect that the collection of things which are going to be done will lift patronage significantly. The question is, is this as revolutionary as some people would like? Well, clearly, some people have said they would like LRT. Councillor Panik said they'd like LRT. We need to have the corridor to be able to put LRT down. LRT takes some time to get there, and LRT comes with a big cost. And I think when you go down the track of having LRT, what you have to do is not just do it for this core corridor, you've got to do it right across the, you've got to be prepared to do it right across the city, because you can't tell people, I don't think, who are going to come in in full buses from Island Bay, from Miramar, from Cororrie, to say, as soon as you hit the outsides of the CBD, every one of you, get off and get on, wait, and get onto another vehicle. That ain't going to encourage people to use PT. What it'll encourage people to do is get in their car, and that is not what we want to do. So if you bite a bullet, it's a very big bullet that I think you've got to bite, and that takes a lot of work to do. So, look, I think councillors, the work that we've got in front of us gives us the opportunity to get those details. We need those details, and we also need to recognise that there are a whole group of wraparound things that are going on as well, and we'll get that information in front of you through the regional council when they come to present to you. I think that's all I needed to say, and I look forward to that further work.
Thank you. Please vote on recommendation one. I declare that carried. I'd now like to move to councillor Apenny Mercer with the regulatory processes report about Bing Lucas Drive Tarawa.
I move, your worship.
Have a second, er. Councillor Sparrow, do you wish to speak? Does anyone wish to speak? Then we will now move to voting on recommendations one, A, B, and C. And if anyone wants to have a nibble or a cup of tea, you'll be welcome upstairs on the fourth floor.